Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Rissy.
Here.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Supervisor Lescrans.
Here.
Treasurer Corstange.
Here.
Trustee Nord Dyke. Trustee Shipley.
Present in conference.
Clerk Slater, present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a motion or discussion to approve tonight's agenda?
Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook, to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have one presentation this evening, Mr. Ty Verberge. I'll play it in.
Verbruggy.
Verbruggy, thank you. Is here from the City of Grand Rapids Water Department to answer questions and kind of give a presentation on the different rates and how those were calculated. Jade, do you want to say anything before?
No, Engineer Thorne's been working with Ty on this, so let's turn it over to Ty to talk through their current rate study, how it affects Cascade Residence.
Thanks for coming tonight in person, too.
Yeah, thank you for having me. So Ty Verbruggy, Utility Financial Officer for the City of Grand Rapids. I manage the finances for the water system and the sewer system, both of which Cascade Township is a party to. We have a utility advisory board that governs both of those systems with all of the partner communities represented on that board. So every year, we prepare an annual rate study which dictates the cost of water services and sewer services. The methodology, this is our 49th year doing it. The methodology's been developed over decades. Some of it is codified in contracts with our partner communities. So some of it is non-negotiable. It is what we've agreed upon as a board of utilities. And then other pieces are a little more vague in those contracts and can be moved around. So the way that it works is for each community that is part of our system, we calculate different rates. And that community's rate is based on their revenue requirement, which, as the name implies, is how much revenue each community needs to generate to cover their share of the system costs. So the higher the revenue requirement, the higher the rates have to be. Now, the things that increase that revenue requirement for a community are their share of operating costs, maintaining the system, but also the assets that we put into service. So you put an asset in, we don't feel the cost all at once. It gets spread out over the life of that asset. We also have to build in a return on investment on every asset that we put into the ground. That is by contract, and it's tied to a national index of the cost of issuing debt for these assets. Those things increase revenue requirements. They increase rates. Couple of things can decrease rates. So any dollar that we make from something other than water sewer sales is a dollar less that we have to collect through rates. So we built these digesters at the sewage treatment plant. The natural gas that those create from our municipal waste helps buy down the rates. That extra revenue helps offset rates. There's also the city and customer community circuit breaker, big name. Really, it's a community affordability plan. And I'll talk more about how that works in a little bit because that is very important to this year's rates for Cascade Township. And then all of this is measured against build volume. The more water we sell, the less we have to charge per unit of water. So if we see volume going up, that has a downward pressure on rates, and vice versa is true as well. So I don't want to bury the lead here. So this is how rates are changing for each community. You can see, I put in red there, Cascade Township specifically. Pretty big increase on the water side. We're proposing about a 10.8% increase on water, but a decrease on the sewer side. We're cutting sewer rates this year by about 2.6%. And then you can see at the bottom, the system-wide average. So the increase for water is pretty big for Cascade, but for the system as a whole, most communities are looking at an increase of about 6.4%. On the sewer side, again, we're having a decrease. Now, I think it's also important to look at context here. If we look at the historical numbers, this is just Cascade Township. How their rates, how your rates have changed over the last 15 years. And you can see, for this water system, the average annual increase has been about a 1.5%. Sewer side, it's been a little bit bigger, about 2.1% per year, annualized. And you can see, last year on the water side for Cascade, it was actually a decrease of a little bit under 9%. And so we try and do our best to smooth this out, so you're not seeing big decreases and then big increases, but sometimes that's just how the methodology works out. It's math, it's not really something that I, you know, just make up these numbers for. I also think, I want to point this out because it's one thing to talk about rates as an abstract concept and say, oh, 10%. What does that mean for a household? How is that actually going to change people's bills? So this is showing how the average quarterly bill will change by community. And this is based on average consumption for a household. And so you can see Cascade, I highlighted there, their water, the average household's water bill is going up, you know, a little under 11%, but the average sewer bill is going down a little over 2%. But because sewer services are more expensive, even though it's a smaller percentage change, it has an outsized impact on the bill. So the average household, their quarterly bill would be up about 3%, which is about $9 every three months. Now, there are some households that are on water but have a septic system, and so they won't see that balancing. They will just see the water increase, or they might just be, or they might be on both. I guess there aren't many that'll just be on sewer but no water. And then this side is looking at it from a commercial perspective. So this is not households, this is businesses. Their impact is actually tempered even more by the sewer side because of how we cap sewer consumption for households, for domestic households in the summer. Now, what drove these, right? That's the big question. Why are rates going up? Why is this happening? So on the water side, the big thing is assets and service. In the past year, we've put into service $14 million worth of water mains for Cascade Township specifically. The biggest project being Berger Goodwood. This was that extension of neighborhoods that had wells that were being contaminated by PFOS. And so we got some state money. It was a loan from the state to help bring those houses onto the system. Even though it's a low interest loan from the state, even though we got some principal forgiveness, from an expense standpoint, those assets still depreciate, and they still hit our books, and so we still have to build those into the rates. That's $14 million of new assets for Cascade. Prior to this, Cascade's total water main value was like 24 million. So you're looking at almost, you know, over 50% increase in the value of those assets. That big depreciation, plus the return on investment, is why the rates are what they are this year. And that, like I said, that return on investment is tied to a national index by contract. That index went up a full point in the past, almost a full point in the past year. So the cost of borrowing has also gotten more expensive, which is also factored in here. Other big thing, operational expenses are up. We're seeing costs increasing across the board, whether it's labor, whether it's electricity to pump the water here from Lake Michigan, chemicals, our vehicles to get out and maintain, everything is going up, and that's reflected in everybody's rates. But that is the second biggest driver here for Cascades. You do have some good things that are helping temper those rate increases. Like I mentioned, the Community Affordability Program, that was the biggest thing here. If it wasn't for that program, the increase this year would have been closer to 24%. And that's why we have it, so that we don't have something like that happen. And I'll talk more about how that exactly works, but that was the biggest thing here. And then additionally, we added Caledonia to the system this year as a new water customer. Expanding the system's customer base helps offset some of those shared costs, right? Now, Caledonia's eating some of those costs, so Cascade doesn't need to eat them. And then lastly, build volume. More water is being used over the past few years. We look at three-year consumption to smooth things out a little bit rather than year-to-year. Over the past three years, consumption is up 2.4%. That has a downward pressure on rates. On the sewer side, we won't spend much time here because sewer rates are going down, so people are probably less interested in that. But they just put fewer assets in a service. They don't have, you know, they didn't have to get anybody off of PFOS-contaminated wells. They don't have to replace lead pipes. So their, their expenses are much lower this year. And additionally, like I mentioned, we get natural gas volume from those digesters. The water system doesn't have a sideline like that helping bring in revenue. The sewer system does. So affordability program, like I mentioned, the way that this works, our contract stipulates that we set aside all the penalty revenue that we collect in a year. So that's mostly late fees, but if someone does something they're not supposed to do and they get hit with a fee, that goes into this bucket. 12.5% of it gets set aside for individual household assistance. Any of our retail partners, of which Cascade is one of them, anyone that lives in those retail communities can apply for assistance if they're having trouble paying their bill. If they get approved, that money comes out of that pot. That's administered through the Kent County Community Action Fund. The other portion, the large portion here, 87.5% of those penalty fees help offset communities' rates. This is not for individual households. The way that works, if a community has an average rate, has a rate increase that's higher than the system-wide average, some of that money helps bring their increase down to where it's closer to the system average. So if the system average increase is 6%, a community has an 8% increase, they get some of this money to help bring them down to 7%. So they're closer to the average. So in the past year, we collected a little under 1.4 million in penalty fees. We supplement that with some other revenue, and so we set aside $250,000 for household assistance for the next year. Is that enough money? Well, if we look at the past year, we set aside $233,000 last year, 75% of the way through this year, and we've dispersed less than 25% of it. Any money that doesn't get used for household assistance gets put into rates next year to help reduce them for everybody. From the community standpoint, the other, the bulk of this revenue, of this penalty revenue, $1.2 million, we can, we applied 822,000 of it. So the math worked out that on the sewer side, we didn't have to use all of it because, again, sewer rates are going down. On the water side, we applied all of it. And what that looks like, I know this is a little hard to see, this is showing the expenses, the revenue requirement drivers for each community. And you'll see at the bottom there, there's a line called "less circuit breaker." That's us applying those credits. And you'll see, on the water side, we had, what was it? $540,000 to apply from that. Almost all of that went to Cascade Township. Over half a million dollars of that went to Cascade because you guys had the biggest rate increase. And so we wanted to try and keep all the communities relatively equal. And so some years, it doesn't go to Cascade, some years it's more evenly distributed among all communities. Some years, it's like this, where it goes mostly to Cascade. Next year, it might mostly go to Caledonia. I guess not Caledonia, they're a wholesale, but a Grand Rapids Township, for instance. On the sewer side, a little more evenly distributed, but again, we didn't have to distribute as much on the sewer side because their rates were already, everyone's rates were already going down. And then any that don't get used, that don't get applied this year, get built into everyone's rates next year, again, to help reduce those. Lastly, I just want to talk about the process here. So my team is working on this study through October and November. We presented to the Utility Advisory Board two weeks ago. That's all the partner communities. That kicks off 30 days of public comment from you guys. If you have questions, concerns, you can come to me, ask me to come talk to you guys and give a presentation. I can answer questions. There are some things that we can move around if you decide that, hey, this is not something that our residents can afford. We can't manage this. There are some things that we can do. My hands are tied in some ways, but there are, you know, there's always something. We, I present to City Commission of Grand Rapids on November 13th. They then have until December 16th to mull it over. They will make the ultimate decision on whether or not to approve these rates. They will vote at the December 16th meeting. There's also time in here for public comment. If any residents want to come and leave comments with me, they are, they are free to either reach out to me via email, they can call the city. We have public office hours three times where people can come in and share their comments before the City Commission votes on December 16th. If they do vote to approve, rates would go into effect on January 1st. They would be in effect for the whole of 2026. We'd start this process all over again next October. So that's kind of the, I know it was probably a little bit wonky. I tried to keep it not too technical, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, whether tonight or after tonight.
Got one question. You used a couple of terms here, and I've heard them in the past. Cascade is a retail customer.
Yes.
Caledonia is a wholesale customer. What's difference of the two types of customers?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I'll go back here. So retail customers, the City of Grand Rapids Water System is selling directly to the households. So we set the ultimate price. We also maintain all the assets. So in Cascade, our crews are out here maintaining the assets. A wholesale customer, we're not selling to the households in East Grand Rapids. We are selling to the community of East Grand Rapids, who then turns around and they dictate what price to sell to their households. So I can say, East Grand Rapids, a unit of water costs 250. East Grand Rapids might say, well, we don't want to charge a household 250. We're going to eat that difference and we're going to charge 240. Or they might say, well, we have some of our own internal costs we need to build in here, so our rates are actually going to be 270. They maintain their assets that are in their system. We maintain like the filtration plant, but wholesale, they maintain like the actual mains under their streets.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Of course. And they, those are governed by different contracts. We have one contract for all of our retail customers and one for all of our wholesale customers. So there are slight differences in how their rates are calculated. Thank you.
How does that affect the township's ability, too, to negotiate with the city about water if it's directly, if it's a retail community, like directly with the residents?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, there's a utility advisory board. We meet once a month. It's open to the public. Cascade has representation on that board. If we were to change methodology, if we decide, hey, we don't think a return on investment makes a lot of sense, maybe tying into that index is, is not the best way to go. Anything like that would have to go to the Utility Advisory Board for a vote. And so no one community can dictate that, changing the methodology in that way. If it's something that is specific just to Cascade, so like the Berger Goodwood project, those assets only affect Cascade. And so if you decided, hey, we want to phase those assets into our rates so that they're not all hitting our rates in one year, they're getting spread out a little bit more over four years. We can do something like that. It's a little more complicated, but it's easier when it just affects one community. So again, there are some things that we can maneuver at your request. Some things, depending on what it is, would have to go to the whole board for approval.
Who is Cascade Township's representative on that utility advisory board?
Typically, it is Eric Thorne.
Thank you. You mentioned that rates are, a, a, a large portion of how they're calculated is based on volume. And with the addition of the homes in the Goodwood Berger neighborhood, do you anticipate that volume being enough to make a, a positive change on the water bill in the future? Or is it too soon to tell? I mean, I would think you'd have an indication with the number of houses that have connected.
So I would have to look at how, I don't know off the top of my head how many individual residents, residences we put onto the system as a result of that. I will say, it, even if they did have significant consumption, because we look at build volume at a three-year average, it would take a while for any change in volume to really trickle down into rates. So I, it would, it will have an impact, especially in a smaller community like Cascade. You know, any change has an outsized impact. But I, it's way too early for me to be able to speak accurately to how that'll affect rates.
That's fine. Do you, do you know approximately what the ratio in Cascade is as far as homes that have just water and homes that have water and sewer?
I, I do not have that number off the top of my head, but I can absolutely follow up with you.
I think of.
Just sewer, which we said was an oddball, but we, we have some because of the river.
Exactly. But we have, I, I would say overwhelmingly, the majority of the people in Cascade just have water. We do not have near as many people that have access to the sewer, unfortunately.
But we do have the weird population that has just.
Just the sewer, yes. Well, there's, yeah, good reason for that.
Right.
You had mentioned the cost of the bonds for the infrastructure that was put in for the Goodwood.
Yes.
I think that was all paid for by the airport, wasn't it? With that lawsuit?
So as far as I know, and I wasn't here when the final agreement was.
Can you go back?
Signed, but I, but I believe that, yeah, the funding of the construction was. As far as the financing and the specifics with the grant, I can't speak to that. I'd have to go back and look at the agreement, but the construction was absolutely paid by, by those dollars. And if, in, I know the city was in the, in the meetings with that, because the project basically ran through the city, so.
That's interesting, because he talks about the assets within the Berger Goodwood, which is on S-line, being 13 million. We did not.
No.
Pay that much.
So if we can quantify.
Don't understand.
Right, well.
$10 million number there, or the assets to depreciate, but yet that is not the amount of money that we got from the airport to pay for.
Correct. And I don't want to speak out of turn, but I come from a community where I had a water department, and correct if I'm wrong, the asset does not equate to the construction cost in the actual project. Your asset is going to be something that you have to look at standalone, and you have to look at it for years, and you're, to appreciate that and spread that debt, and you have to be ready to, to address any failures within that asset as well. So I'm assuming some of that is built into this, if I'm correct.
That is correct. So my understanding is about half of it, so seven and a half, I believe, seven and a half million of it was from a state loan that was forgiven. Now, that's great, but an asset in our rates has two separate pieces that increase the rates. There's the depreciation of the asset, and then there's the return on investment. So if an asset is donated, you know, a developer, a private developer pays for it, and then they donate it to the system, or if it's from a loan that's forgiven, there is no return on investment because we didn't invest any money. There is still depreciation, which is, I believe, is what you were referring to. You do still have to take the full cost of the asset. Even if we didn't pay a penny for it, we still have to take that full cost and build it into our rates as depreciation, because eventually, we'll have to repair it, we'll have to replace it, and when we replace it, it's not going to be 13 million anymore. Now, it's going to be, you know, it'll be 75 years in the future. It'll probably be closer to, you know, $20 million, if not more.
And unfortunately, the bigger your system and the older your system, the more maintenance it needs.
Kind of surprised. A couple of questions. Who owns the assets?
So with a retail system, the assets are owned by the City of Grand Rapids Water System or the City of Grand Rapids Sewer System. With a wholesale customer, those assets that are in the community are owned by whatever community that is.
If we wanted to acquire those assets and become a wholesale customer?
I'm not sure what that process would look like.
I'd love to understand that. And also, what would then preclude us from separating from the City of Grand Rapids and moving to Wyoming?
Sure. That absolutely would be a discussion that could be had. The contracts that govern our retail and our wholesale partnerships are, I believe they are 30-year contracts, and they get renewed every five years. I believe the last renewal was 2024. So at any point, we are, you know, 25 to 30 years away from a contract expiring. Now, that doesn't mean that there's no way to renegotiate, to reopen. We've done five amendments since those contracts have been created. So it is possible to amend things. It is possible to get out of a contract if you wanted to purchase your assets and become a wholesale customer and connect to a different system, maybe. That is also an option. I'm not, you know, that is a big conversation that I am not authorized to just have here. But if that is something that you wish to explore, then absolutely, we as a utility advisory board can have that discussion.
Wyoming was not, was part of your system once upon a time. Is that accurate?
There have been, yes, there have been other communities that were previously part of our system. I think the north, I think, I want to say North Kent Water System was at some point. I've been with the city for four, five years now. So some of those systems that moved off, they did it well before I was there, and so I, I'm not as familiar with the process.
It just seems like Cascade has a disproportionate amount of the rate. Just if I look at it, right? I think it's great that you bring us a presentation, but when 90% of my residents aren't using your sewer, your presentation isn't accurate. And I take issue with that.
Okay. We can absolutely, I, I would love to follow up with you if you want to talk more about this.
I, I would love a presentation that reflects our actual costs, yeah. What, what's the impact to my residents? Because you're so, you're showing a blended rate that's not factual. I think that was a, an absolute miscalculation on your part, and I would encourage you next time to reflect what the community has in its asset pool.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Would you, is it possible to email this presentation to us, or is it available on your website?
Absolutely.
Or we, if we access this information later?
Yeah, so the full rate study, the full math, all of the stuff that goes into it, that is available on the City of Grand Rapids website. This presentation is not, because this was just created for Cascade Township. I've shared it with your team. I can definitely send you all a copy. If you'd like to look through any of the numbers, again, happy to answer any questions that you have underlying.
Thank you. I can get it from our staff.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Article five, public comments. Now is the time for comments on anything scheduled for tonight's agenda. That includes special assessments that will be included in the winter tax bills, a budget amendment, authorizing end-of-year payments, also the meeting schedule for 2026. Please state your name and address for record-keeping, and for the fairness of everyone, limit your time to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to come in virtually? No.
Good evening. First name Mark, last name Ann Sarah, 1799 Platinum Falls. I've been here a couple of times. I'm sure you're tired of seeing the barbarian, but that's who I've been labeled, so thank you very much. I'm here in multiple capacities, as I've said in my comments on 11/5.
Sorry for your comments about, if there are about issues that the board is, is addressing tonight, board agenda items, otherwise, the time to comment on anything.
Your board agenda has 11/5 regular meeting, correct?
Today's November 19.
I know, but your, your agenda item here is open to discussion on 11/5 meeting agenda, correct? So we had a discussion then?
No, it's just approval of the minutes. This is the time for article, anything related to Article nine, new business items tonight.
So if you will allow me, Madam Chair Lady?
Excuse me. The time.
To have that discussion in the next protocol, correct? Which is the public comments of Article 11, correct?
That's what I was just going to say.
Then it's my most humble apologies.
Thank you very much. Is there discussion or a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So move.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Rissy, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Financial actions, specifically invoices scheduled to be paid on November 20th and the financial statements for October 2025. Is there discussion or a motion?
Move to approve.
Support. It's a motion by trustee Rissy, supported by treasurer Corstange, to approve tonight's financial actions. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Having no unfinished business, Article nine, new business, first item 071, 2025. Resolution for special assessments on the winter 2025 tax bill. Andrew Smith, did you want to say anything before we turn it over to?
Sure, I'll just do a quick summary. So we, we do this for full transparency. It's not required by law for the board to approve this. But this is all the special assessments that are assessed to the residents. Some are resident-driven or were resident-driven when they were requested. It also includes the drain assessments that we get from the county, which we really don't have any control over that. So this is, this is what will be added to the tax bills that'll go out shortly. Lorna has anything more?
What he said. Any comments from the board?
Move to approve special assessments.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Rissy, supported by trustee Shipley, to approve the resol, oh, clerk Slater, I'm sorry. It's a roll call for a resolution. Please call the roll.
Trustee Rissy.
Yes.
Treasurer Corstange.
Yes.
Trustee Nord Dyke.
Yes.
Trustee Nord Hook.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerk Slater.
Yes.
Supervisor Les Prince.
Yes. Motion carried. Item zero seven two twenty twenty five, authorization of budget amendment.
I'll turn this one right over to Lorna.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Supervisor Jade. Before you is a fairly standard request for action for year end budget amendments. Typically, these amendments are presented in the December meeting. I will not be available at that meeting, so I wanted to kick off the budget amendment season and say that there will be more budget amendments to come. I hope to present them in absentia at the December meeting after reviewing the list with the Personnel and Finance Committee. This list tonight is mostly housekeeping. You'll see that dollars are moving from one line to another, but without a real financial impact, other than we do have a two million dollar adjustment to cover a budget for the Verberg property that was just acquired.
Board comments, discussion?
Make a motion for the approval of the authorization of budget amendments.
Support. Some motion by trustee Rizzi, supported by treasurer Corstange to approve authorization of the budget amendments as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item zero seven three twenty twenty five, payment of claims at year end. Lorna?
Thank you. I made the comment to a couple of board members earlier this week that I am not a CPA, but I play a CPA very well. If CPA stands for copy and paste again, this is another year end item. Looking at the calendar, there are three weeks between this meeting and the next board meeting. And in those three weeks, we do have a lot of utility bills that are presented. And it's always a little tight to pay those on time. So I'm looking for authorization for Jade and myself to review invoices and pay them, so there are no late fees. And also, if you look at the December tenth meeting, to what is proposed for the first meeting in January, that's a five week gap, and that is a long time to keep vendors waiting on money. So we look for permission to pay invoices administratively with a report to the board at the next scheduled meeting.
Make a motion to authorize township manager his or her, or his designee, to review and approve claims against township between November twenty and January fourteen of twenty twenty six. Further direct that the list of claims paid in this manner be included at the next board meeting packet for review and approval by the board.
Support. The motion by trustee Rizzi, supported by treasurer Corstange to approve the payment of claims at year's end request as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Last item of new business, zero seven four twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six township boards and commissions meeting schedule. Jade?
This is an annual, excuse me, annual request as required, so we can post our public meetings on the website and on, on the, on the door at the admin building. So this is the schedule. There are some changes on here due to holidays, for instance, the month of November and December for this particular board. And then there are other days that are affected for other boards and commissions as well. I know, Chris, do you want to?
Yeah, I've made a suggestion, both to supervisor and to the manager, to follow precedents of years past where we've aligned our schedule to the Forest Hill School's schedule. It just seems to be a regional thing that we do. The only date that is in conflict that I can see is that the planning commission has already, to my knowledge, made some adjustments is April eighth, and I would propose that we have a single meeting during the month of April. And in the future, I will, as I have a, my wife works for the school district, I can provide the manager in the fall, out that calendar, and we can adjust to it accordingly.
Does the clerk have any concern with the planning commission meeting on November second? Because I know in the past, we never had planning commission meetings in that first week in November, because if there was a school election or something, this room was generally being used the next day, so they had to set up that the day prior.
So my deputy clerk says that's not a conflict, because when they set up this room, they can put the equipment to one side and set it up early. The election personnel are here at six o'clock on Election Day, so.
And I think the second of November, we need second, it's the Tuesday after.
Oh, it's the first Tuesday after the first-
Right, so November.
It's the next week.
I believe it's the next week. So I don't think that's a conflict, but we can double check.
Because the Monday would be the first, right? Or no, Monday.
Well.
Okay, Monday would be this, I get it. That would be the first Monday, so.
So November three will be the election, so November, November two will be the day before, because it's the first Tuesday, first Monday. So we can just set the equipment to one side and I believe we did that this year, did we not, Jennifer? It works out fine, so.
On the planning commission meeting. On the topic, this last one was smaller, but if they're well attended, then we'll have a conflict.
I think we should just take it off then. Go ahead.
Well, I I know that we did go through and talk with all the departments to make sure that these were all here. And the school calendar, since I've been here, has not been a topic of concern with the township board meetings, so we can adjust that. But I think for the continuity of business that we should keep it on here, and at the time, if we see it's going to be a big agenda for planning commission, we can postpone it at that point and change the date. But I think we should keep-
Fire station one, I mean, I don't think we use that for-
Yeah, we can, yes, we can move that.
Yeah, move it out of here.
Once it gets closer and we decide what's on the agenda.
Yeah, I would rather keep it in order.
So I'll make a motion, yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the commission meeting schedule with one change, and that is removing the April eighth township board meeting from the schedule.
Support.
Some motion by trustee Nordike, supported by treasurer Corstange, to approve the twenty twenty six township boards and commissions meeting schedule as proposed with the removal of the April eighth meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Supervisor, can I make one more comment on that? With that change, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that we will be bringing forward to you something very similar like we did tonight in order to pay the bills. Because that's going to again be a longer stretch between the end of March and the end of April to pay the bills. Good.
Having no discussion items on tonight's agenda, now is the time for public comments on anything on the agenda tonight or not. Again, name and address for record keeping, please, for the fairness of everyone in the township. Limit your comments to three minutes. Welcome.
I'm back. Thank you for having me. And scan first name Mark, last name Ann Sarah, seventeen ninety nine Platinum Falls. Here and just in some discussion from our eleven five meeting follow up. Here is a Cascade Township taxpayer, commercial realtor with a focus on retail, restaurants and land, investor in residential properties and commercial properties in Cascade Township. Represent several commercial landowners that have strip centers for sale and a lease in the township, and a consumer who shops, eats and dines in the township as well. My concern is the discussions that's been on the table for the Form Based Code, especially FVC, FVF and FO twenty eight, which includes old twenty eighth street. Our goal here today is to just continue the discussion. I think we can all agree that being on the front page of cranes probably not a good thing for a black guy for the Cascade Township right now. When our planning commissioner called folks like myself and my other colleagues barbarians at the gates. On eleven five, we had plenty of public comments, twenty five spoken opposition. There were eleven rebuttals, two in favor. I think the room was packed more than any other time that we've had any of these types of discussions that I've been here. And I've been to multiple municipalities for the same topics. I'm just here again to ask us to consider slowing down the process. As a few trustees said on the eleven five meeting, that let's take a break, few months and figure it out. More transparency to residents and the business owners. Let's work together to have more public meetings, work sessions, so they can voice their concerns, not just three minutes at a time. Involve developers, commercial and residential residents and brokers to help shape the township. Let's find an ability to find a group that can help us with an economic study that tells us the real facts on if the Form Based Code will slow development, increase or decrease taxes. And we know, as Madam Chairwoman said, I love the Form Based Code, but I know it's going to cost more, in her public comments. In closing, I ask you to please let the professionals help you collaborate. Let's figure it out together. Let's share our vision to make Cascade Township a great place to live, work, worship, eat and enjoy this beautiful township that we have together. I'm confident, I really am, for attending several meetings now, that we have the ability together publicly to do something that's going to be right. I know this ordinance is of nineteen seventy four, and we've been band-aiding it for decades. And I know your passion and desire, Madam Chairwoman, to push this through, but I ask you to please-
Thank you.
Listen. Thank you so much.
Yes, hi, my name is David Martin. I'm at two seven one five Snow Avenue. I came to the last meeting, but I felt unqualified to speak, so I studied. And as was said, this is a lot of paper. My talk is not so much about the zoning, but about speeches I heard from those who really weren't engaged in the process as you developed it, but only came at the last minute to criticize. My job required me to change manufacturing methods, and no matter how much I solicited feedback, there were always last minute cynics showing up, wanting me to, and unwilling to adjust for the common good. I learned to counteract obstruction with facts. First fact, you have been transparent. The Cascade website and newsletters have publicized the new ordinance and invited public and private comment for years. A brief look shows that the changes are thoroughly documented in tables and are even color coded. You only need to open your eyes. Second, developers and realtors were claimed to have only the best interest of Cascade in mind, thus no need for more rules. One such developer ended by criticizing the placement of Tommy's Car Wash, which destroyed those claims. Tommy's was put to bear by a developer, and the current zoning couldn't stop it. It seems like more rules are needed, right? Third, yes, twenty two year olds cannot typically afford Cascade houses, and neither could I back then. But through hard work and delayed gratification, I am now living the dream in Cascade. Fourth, it was claimed that Ada did it right. Just look at Zillow. There is essentially no difference. Ada did not make more affordable housing than Cascade. It's not true. Despite claims to the contrary, more density does equal more people, does equal more cars and does equal more congestion. It's a fact. Now, nobody in this room or community has as much experience as the board and the planning commission in examining unacceptable development proposals in Cascade. You know how bad the future might be. Please rely on that expertise and the sage advice of General George Patton. If you're ninety percent sure of the outcome, implement like hell. Don't wait. I thank you for your hard work and the perseverance in protecting Cascade. Oh, by the way, this document, it's the current zoning ordinance, and it couldn't keep an ugly car wash out of our township. Let's get something better. Thank you.
Scott Van Salkema, I live on Orange Court. The current zoning board or the current zoning ordinances on the books have been there for nineteen seventy four. That's fifty one years ago. I think you guys have taken a long enough time to possibly, you know, update them. Fifty one years, so. And as I said at the last meeting, the process started three years ago with the surveys of what to do with parks and the strategic plan, and then the master plan, which has now been updated. So then these zoning ordinances now have to be reflect that master plan, which is a good thing. And like I said at the last meeting, do I agree with everything in the zoning? No. And regarding density, I live right behind, basically the village area. So I don't want a large apartment complex there, like what's along M six. I believe it's called, what, the ridges of Cascade or villas of Cascade. You guys know. You know, that is extremely dense. I don't need a Woodland Creek apartment style complex, like which in Kentwood, in the middle of our village. What Ada did do is good, where they do have higher end looking businesses. I'm sure they have a Form Based Code there as well, at least somewhat. They're not getting cookie cutter buildings in there of, you know, what a big corporate conglomerate wants. It's unique and different and higher end and upscale. And regarding the newest construction that's available in Cascade, there is not one house of new construction on homes dot com that's less than one million dollars. And when there's residents in this township that are buying eight hundred thousand dollar homes and bulldozing them to put another one, this is not an affordable area. It used to be. You used to be able to buy Forest Hills condos from anywhere from eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. Those are now at the bottom end of two hundred grand. Chatham Woods condos over by Meyer, also right around one ten to one thirty to get in there, maybe one fifty. Again, two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. This is not an affordable town, and it shouldn't be, and I want to keep it that way. And yes, you can still get in possibly to some of the older homes, even in Caravel Village. But even there's one there listed for sale for four hundred and nine thousand dollars, which again, those used to be two hundred to two hundred and fifty. It sold less than ten years ago. It was right around in the two hundreds. So now that's four hundred and nine thousand. And the only way to get the most affordable bang for the buck with cheapest areas that's online in homes dot com for new construction are modular homes. Do we want to have a lot of trailer homes or trailer parks and allow that? You do allow that here, but you guys are structuring the zoning, which is great, to make it the least condensed area, where the modular homes have to be parallel with the street, as opposed to perpendicular to shoehorn them in. So keep up the good work.
Doug Lee, eighty six thirteen fifty second street. I do want to thank the board, because I've been participating with this process. And I've watched the code change. So I am reasonably happy where it's headed. I like the fact that it would allow for input and is modified. It's not how it started out. So I, that's my, I participated and I watched it change and certain things did change. So thank you. I also want to wish you very happy Thanksgiving, and it's been a long time, and we all got through it, and thank you.
Evening, Board. I'm not talking about zoning or anything like that. I just want to tell you, and it's such a small part of our community, but the bridge kills. The lights that were put up, just, I've never seen the bridge like that, so it's very cool. I think they're going to do the other side. But it's great. I love it. So keep up the good work.
Hi, Rod Schultz, Orange Court. Pleasure to be before this, I guess, buddy. And the integrity of this place has really come up since I've moved here, and I thank the supervisor for that. I have a complaint. I always do, or I wouldn't be up here, right? And I go back to the stone house. I called Dan about a couple of weeks ago and talked about the generator. I don't know why. I need to get a life instead of walking around looking at things. And I got a funny remark from him. And having worked around government for a long time, or even in your own business, whatever it is, and I have a couple of them. Your people that work, that on your payroll are, they're a fixed cost. You can assign them anywhere you want. So I said, that generator needs to be serviced. Did it get on the inventory list? Did you get the serial number off it? I don't think it was. He says, well, we don't have it in our budget to service it. You got mechanics, you got people working. I can service it for you for free. It takes one point nine quarts of oil. It takes a four dollar and sixty five cent filter, oil filter from Walmart. I service my own. I've had them for years. Clean the battery. Hopefully the battery doesn't need replacing, because that's about a hundred and fourteen bucks. But, you know, you gotta, you gotta look at your, your budget, you know, where you are. Well, you don't have to have that in your budget for two quarts of oil. I just thought that was a strange answer. And my other question would be, did it ever get on the inventory because things could disappear? Oh, it's junk, we'll throw it away. No, it doesn't work that way. Not in any business I've been in. Not in any business I've been in. But again, I hope you all have a great Thanksgiving and a Merry Christmas and all that stuff. And keep up the good work and keep the integrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Michelle Lauer from Overlook Summit, and I was unable to attend the November fifth meeting. But I've attended enough of the meetings before November fifth to have seen the pattern of developers and real estate agents and investors applying considerable pressure to you, the board, in opposition to the proposed zoning ordinance. And in my opinion, they're pushing for higher residential density and smaller roads because it's more profitable for them to develop and sell as many units as possible in whatever size piece of land. And this is contrary to what Cascade homeowners want, as I think you've heard tonight. And contrary to what's documented in the township strategic plan and the master plan, both of which contain the Cascade commitment. And the Cascade commitment provides for preserving the natural beauty and the community character of Cascade. So we do not need those with profit motives to help shape Cascade. We just need you as the board to stay true to the Cascade commitment. So thank you very much for your work to do that.
We do have a virtual comment. Mark.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me? I'm assuming.
Yes.
Uh, Mark Demarest, six six one four Brook Hills Court. I just, I wasn't able to attend the um, meeting two weeks ago either, but read about it in the Grand Rapids Press, so that was news to me. Uh, so I watched the um, the public input and largely agreed with their concerns. Um, I just want to say I was able to buy a starter home. Um, when I was kind of fresh out of college in between off of Linda Avenue between Burton and Craft and Cascade. And it wouldn't be a significantly different value as far as a percentage of salaries. Yes, the value's gone up, but I would still be in the same boat and you know, at the time I was making less than six figures. So it's not, um, you know, that, that's a maybe a more of a humble neighborhood, but there are opportunities in Cascade for those types of purchases. Um, and then of course there's Redwood Apartments called uh, by Culvers and Walmart. And there's also a good number of condominiums. Someone else brought up Forest Hills condominiums earlier for about two hundred thousand dollars. And I just think that that is pretty affordable. Um, and also one of the other public comments specified an address of six eight six two Maple Crest, which is pretty close to where I'm located. And so I went by it and um, a lot of the talk was about affordable housing and adding affordable housing to Cascade. But those lots that it sounded like someone wanted to split would be on the Thorn Apple River. And I don't think that that would address the affordable housing issue. So I guess I just wanted to bring that up. Um, and then something else pretty personal to me is that I was able to get out of an abusive relationship, but like pretty quickly knowing that that was going to happen. But able to find something just a couple of blocks away. So still within all of the school districts and which was important to me for my kids. So I, I don't know that there's a lack of affordable housing. I think that maybe some of the people need to do more research as far as I was able to find something, but I've also familiar with the area. So um, I guess just take that away for food for thought when considering um, the zoning ordinances going forward. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tricia Ruffer, six nine two zero Berger Drive. Um, I'm forty-five year resident of Cascade. Love it here. Never want to leave. And um, just want to thank you. You guys have, you, I started listening five years ago and I realized I need to know what's going on around here more. And I have been so impressed. So just keep doing a good job. I thank you that you are listening to the residents, not the experts on what we want Cascade to be. So just keep it up. Thank you.
Manage your comments. Jade.
Thank you supervisor. Um, a couple of things that came up through comments, then I'll address some of the public outreach in regards to the zoning. Um, I first want to announce that uh, the annual tree lighting for Christmas will be on December sixth at five o'clock at the um, old muse, at the museum. And immediately following that will be Santa at the Stone House with cookies and hot cocoa and caroling. So I invite everybody out on December sixth. It's a Saturday at five o'clock. Uh, should we're usually is the weekend of Thanksgiving, so we're hoping that we're actually going to get some bigger attendance, moving it off of a holiday weekend. Um, so it should be a good time. The lights on the bridge. Um, it's, it's great comments coming in all day today. Since the lights have gone up, they are going to go up on the other side. Um, they're right in the middle of the project now, but so far I think what they've done is looking really nice. And if anyone has any feedback, please give it to us. This is the first year that we're decorating the bridge that way. So um, we can only do better. Um, in regards to the generator at the Stone House, um, it is on our inventory list. We do know it's there. I will look into the response that was received. Um, that's this news to me that there was conversation had about it. With that, I will address the board's direction at the last meeting in regards to the zoning, um, which was introduced. And there was instruction to have at least two public meetings moving forward. Over the course of the last two weeks, I've got with staff, worked with some of the board members and rolled out the following plan. Um, on November tenth, we did publish a questionnaire. We wanted to get things out as quickly as possible to get feedback because it was pretty. Um, it was pretty intense and we've had a lot of comments. Uh, so we got a questionnaire that was put out on the website. Um, there's a page dedicated to it that has the current zoning ordinance, the proposed zoning ordinance and a comparison document, also a link to the questionnaire. Uh, roll that out on November tenth. To date, we have a hundred and I believe twenty responses that have been generated so far. So we've put, done a couple of Facebook posts and we will leave that questionnaire up there. In addition to that, we are in the process of developing a fact sheet. Uh, we want to make sure that it is thorough, so it is not out there yet. Hope to have that out there by Friday. Um, with all of the questions and concerns that have come over, come up in the last month, uh, we're trying to break those down and categorize them. Right now it's a six page document, so we are trying to be as concise as possible and hope to have that out, um, like I said, by the end of the week. We are doing a special edition, although some say they, they come to their homes and they don't read them, but we are doing a special edition of the newsletter that is going to be completely dedicated to uh, zoning. Um, right now it's eight pages. That'll go to every single address in the township. The goal is to have that out the week of December eighth. In addition, we are putting together four public meetings. We're going to have these open house style um, that allow the public to come in, ask questions and have more one-on-one conversations with experts and staff and board members if they, if they are here. Um, this is not going to be a formal meeting. It's going to be very informal in here where we can ask all those questions. There are going to be flyers that'll be on the table in the back that have the dates on there. Those are, there's two in December. There are two in January. And that will be for the entire ordinance. We'll have it broken up into different sections, different districts to answer those questions and have um, good dialogue back and forth. We're going to do a similar open house, which will be um, geared towards anybody in the village and Old Twenty-Eighth. There's been a lot of concern, a lot of questions circling around that. So we're going to do a specific meeting in regards to that in January. And invitations will be going out to that to all businesses. Um, we're going to do two sessions of that, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Um, that way we can give ample opportunity for anyone to, to attend those and ask their questions. And then in addition, um, I have extended an invitation to representatives of GRAR um, to meet and um, and discuss some of the, the global concerns that the industry has. Uh, we're still working on setting up that date. With all of that, I believe that ends up being six public meetings, one special meeting, a dedicated questionnaire. We have a website. It's available on the website. We have the fact sheet and then we have township mailing going out to almost nine thousand parcels. So with that, um, if there's any other suggestions in regards to um, public outreach, um, I, I'd love to hear them. Because I think that's a lot of, lot of, um, there's a lot of opportunity there for the, over the next two months.
Yes.
Get that feedback. And again, this is the flyer. Ten, yep, okay. It's on the, it's on the table over there. And this will be available on the website as well. That's great. Thanks Jade.
Good work. Thank you.
That's all I have tonight.
Thanks. Board comments. Trustee Shipley.
As always, stand up and thank you guys for attending, including the Zoom people. Um, some of you guys are here repeatedly and I, I appreciate your comments, whether they're positive or negative. It doesn't matter because they all go into betterment of Cascade. Um, David, Scott, writing down because I don't want to miss anybody. Uh, Ken times two. Uh, Nick, Joe, Roger, Bob, Doug, Mark, Michelle, Tricia, and any Zoom participants. People on Zoom, don't be afraid to raise your hand. It's not very often that, that we get somebody that wants to make comments. And they're almost as important as the people that are sitting here. So thanks for being here. Zoom people are important. Don't get me wrong with that. And uh, we all have grumbles, but we all have thanks. So focus on the, on the good things that we have and try and get past the grumbles. And with our help and your neighbors' help, we'll get past all that. Thank you.
Trustee Nordic.
Thank you, everybody, uh, for being here. It is great to see our county commissioner in the room. Wally, would have liked to have heard from you, but not giving you a hard time, but great to see you. Thank you for your support uh, from the county. Always appreciate it. Uh, thank you for everybody who has attended. I, I think Jade has done a wonderful job with the communication sessions that are coming. Uh, my ask of everybody uh, that is watching a recording or watching in the room tonight, bring us specific things to those meetings. Uh, it's easy to say, I don't like it, stop it. Uh, I, I would argue that if the majority of us spent time reading it as the people up here did, you'll see that over eighty percent of it is really good. And twenty percent of it is an area where, hey, I may disagree, uh, or you may disagree. Let's focus on the twenty percent and let's identify solutions to what you may have a concern with. So that, that's my big ask of everybody. Come with ideas because this, this group is open to ideas. We have modified it tremendously since its inception and are, are to listen. There are certainly certain guidelines and principles that are driving it as it sits today. And, and those are, will be inflexible, but there are other areas where I think, at least I hope I can speak on behalf of this board, that there's an openness uh, to, to look at alternatives if they make sense. So uh, please uh, bring those to us.
Trustee Rizzi.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I don't have any other comments.
Trustee Norde.
Well, thanks for coming, everybody. Uh, I just wanted to quick address the cost of housing. Uh, how it's changed over the years, but we don't have any more eight dollar plumbers hanging around. So that adds to the cost of the house, the lumber, the dollar nineteen, two by fours aren't there anymore. All that stuff adds to the cost of a house. Just because the house you're in costs thirty-five thousand dollars forty years ago doesn't mean the one you're going to buy when you sell that is going to be thirty-five thousand dollars. So affordability is based on labor. It's based on materials. It's based on property. Um, and all those things are out of our hands.
Clerk Slater. No comments.
Treasurer Corstage. Um, just agree. Thank everyone for coming. Thank you for the comments. Um, and then thank you to Jade and staff for the education sessions, the plan you put together, um, the survey. You did a really quick turnaround and I think it was really appreciated by everybody on the board that we do want to continue to move forward. We don't want to take a six month hiatus from this. We do think it's important and that we need to move forward. And just very appreciative to you and staff for everybody that worked on that plan to put that together so quickly. So thank you.
Just want to reiterate Jade, thank you for the prompt response and detailed work. Really is a huge help. And wish everyone a thank, a happy Thanksgiving. Thanks for coming tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
She probably makes motion to adjourn. Go ahead. So it's your turn.
It is her turn. It's okay. You can support.
I'll support.
That's a motion by Clerk Slater, supported by um, trustee Shipley to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.